Good to go.
Good to go.
Okay. Welcome to the Planning Board's public hearing for the Jellystone Dock Application. Thank you all for coming. We're glad to see so many people here and to hear your input. A couple of policy reminders. I, well, first, sorry, let me introduce the board. My name is Andrew Boil. I'm the board chair. This is Ed Bergman. This is Doug. Tom Moran. Last name Doug. Ferris. We're all new, so we don't know each other. Also, Chip Stevens.
That's right.
Yes, Code Enforcement Officer. And Justice Hand, just goes handling our Zoom stuff. All right, so some, oh, and Jeremy will be giving the presentation for Jellystone. So policy reminders, the chair, me, Will, call on people whose hands are raised to speak, so please don't speak until you're called upon. Please, if you're able, come up so that you're closer to the microphone so that the people on Zoom can hear you. People who are attending by Zoom, please enter your questions in the chat, and we will pull from them and call them periodically. So again, all questions should be directed to the board. Jeremy will give a presentation, but please don't direct your questions to Jeremy. Direct them to the board, and if the board needs clarification from Jeremy, we'll ask him for the questions. For everyone's, we're asking everyone to limit their comments to two minutes for their first time speaking until everyone who wishes has had a chance to speak. And then if there's still time, then you're free to speak again. But for your first, for your first comment, please limit to two minutes. Chip will raise his hand when you're at 30 seconds to go. And I believe, unless I've forgotten anything?
Nope.
Then I will officially open the meeting. So. Now, I guess, attending, Ed, Doug, Tom. And absent today is Seth and Reed. And I would like to recognize Jeremy. And open the floor to you to give your presentation.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for setting this meeting up. I know it was kind of short notice, and half of the last meeting, we wanted to make sure that we could get it in a timely manner, so I appreciate everybody's time and opportunity to just be here and speak with you and, you know, the people of Wayne. So I just, I want to do a short synopsis of kind of what the last presentation was. The last one was more along the lines of the permanent self. So I just, I want to go over with the town and the board, an overview of what we're looking to do and what we're really proposing to have approved through this process. So as everybody knows, we're here for our dock system. Prior to us purchasing this property, the dock system that was in place was very obsolete, broken down, worn down, using the wrong products for, you know, stuff that's this day and age that should really have been upgraded years and years ago. So during this process, I managed to reach out to a vendor, get our new system that we wanted to use, a really nice aluminum system with a poly buoy bottom, so that way it's a nice flotation system that shouldn't have as much impact on the environment when it comes to the lake itself, and then safety for us and other people on the lake. So the old system was very rickety, could fall apart at any minute. This is going to be secured. It's going to be installed by a professional every year. So as we kind of move through the seasons, there really should no be, there shouldn't be any issues, you know, if there's a heavy flood, because hopefully the dock won't be in at that point. But if there's any rough waters or any storms, the system that we purchased is really a high-end system that's meant to be in waters that are probably a little bit larger than the inner start of the lake. So as you can see here, I did bring some visuals so everybody could see. In the middle, this is probably the biggest visual one, just so that, I don't know, but everybody on the board could see it before. This is the visual of what the dock system would look like. I was asked at the last presentation to have a bigger visual. Basically, this gives you the distances off the shore, the distances to the closest people within proximity of those via the lake. And then views, so this is a complete aerial view of what the system would look like if you were above the our code that we're existing in now. On the left-hand side, you can see the yellow line. Essentially, this is approximately where our property line ends in Wayne. And as you can see, that the dock system doesn't extend past that. And the only neighbor that we have, we do have one neighbor right here, that is actually within that line site of 500 feet of actually seeing it, and then not even at 500 feet of the distance of being close to it. So within the proximity, even though it is a visual impact to some people, for the most part, we are really the only people on the coal, other than the three people on the right-hand side that would be able to see it, but nobody within the 500-foot limit actually having to go and talk to them and notify them that the system was going in. As we, as we designed the system with the professional, we wanted to take a couple of things in mind. The old system had a lot of smaller individual fingers that came off the shoreline. You can actually kind of see them still in this picture. All of these right here were all individual docks that docked, you know, they set these on the shoreline, and every couple of weeks, they'd have to move. As the shore, as the water levels got lower and lower, as everybody here knows, the water level in the inner side of the lake just continues to go down throughout the year. So they would move these docks continuously, stirring up the bottom of the lake every time that they did it. So this, essentially, what we're trying to do is prevent stirring up anything on the bottom of the lake. Prevent anybody that's docking their boat in that area from running aground, which is essentially what they were doing when they were docking up to these. And then creating a better space for people that are boating, people that are swimming. They did have some boat docks over here on the swim dock where people could tie up, that they actually had to cross over the swim zone to that, which is very unsafe for everybody that's in that area. And then creating the best possible opportunity for people that are out there to stay up there. So as everybody does know, year over year, depending on the water levels in the lake, it can get very low. If you pull up a depth map, basically, everything at the bottom of this shows four feet of water, and that's at regular water level. So as the water level goes down, that gets significantly lower. So when you're trying to dock a boat in an area that only has six or seven inches of water, you pose a big concern when it comes to contaminant of the lake with boat residue, people just walking off the shoreline to get onto their boats. So this proposal that we're putting out there is so that way we can, you know, better the shoreline for everybody, better the lake, and make it a whole lot safer for people that are using the area overall. There, there's a couple of other images that I brought. So this is our tax map that was requested the last presentation, basically showing what our property, where our property lines were that we acquired. As you can see here, this is the wetlands, which was a possible concern of our dock system being in the wetlands. Our dock system actually goes off this point here. So as you, wetlands here, this is where we're posing that additional dock though. So working through that, I actually was able to get in touch with inland wildlife and fisheries. And I do have a letter stating that there's a minimal impact that will be put on any type of species that's in the lake. And I can't remember, I think it's John that sent it over, and his department did an assessment last week on that area to make sure nothing of any, you know, breeding grounds or endangered species of any nature would be in that area that would be affected. This is just a blown-up version, so I really wanted to show the wetland area. So this is the wetland area on this poster board. Our swim dock is actually just outside that, but the one that we are proposing to get permitted is actually out here. So it's quite a bit of ways from the wetland, well, well past where we need to be for a setback or anything of that nature. Other than that, some of the big aspects that I was pointing out last time was that we did, at one point, they had 12 points of contact on the shoreline. So eliminating those 12 points and going down to three is a, is a huge improvement for the property and for the lake, just for erosion purposes alone. As you get people going on to these boat docks, they are walking in pass in all different areas to get to those boats. So eliminating eight out of those 12, I'm sorry, nine out of those 12, we're able to lessen the impact of the erosion along the entire shoreline of that property, which is in turn going to help the lake itself when it comes to erosion control, possibly invasive species when it comes to boats going in and out of the water. I do know that one of the biggest concerns of the town and the board and some of the associations is the additional, possible additional boat traffic. And my response to that is essentially that, at any point in time, whether we have 32 slips on our property or not, anybody can drive up to the Wayne Public Boat Launch, launch their boat. Also, our boat launch, we have 202 sites on our property. At any point in time, we could have 50, 60, 70 people use that boat launch if they really wanted to. That's not the case. You know, the numbers that I've seen in the past and even looking into the future, which I can't predict, but just as a pattern overall, all the boat slips that he had before were not utilized. What we're doing is giving them an option to leave their boat in the water instead of taking it out of the water every time they which is going to help with invasive species, because if they take it out of the water every time, they're hauling stuff out of the lake. And then if they go somewhere else and bring it back, they're putting something back into it. So, so the 32 slips is really what we're asking for, and, and so that way we can minimize the impact of people putting boats in, taking them out, and utilizing a, you know, deeper part of the water so that way we can make it safer for everybody involved, the people at our property, the people on the lake, and then the lake itself. Aside from that, that's really what we're asking for. We just want to make it better for everybody.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we're going to have questions from the board before we get to public comment. I had a couple of clarifying questions. I don't know if you guys have any as well. I will go first, I guess. Two things that I just, I've asked you this before, some of these for repetition, but I just wanted to, I thought there were helpful key points was especially first to clarify why it needs to be 220 feet. Why is it so long? You touched on it being shallow for waves there.
Yeah, so based on the depth chart, and, and as you look at the depth chart, you, a lot of people just look at it as that's the, just the common depth of the water, which is, is kind of inaccurate. Just because it doesn't take into consideration that there's, you know, low times of the year and high times of the year. That's just kind of an average. So at low depth of water, you can actually see here at this, basically, where these first docks would be. That's at four feet. So as you go deeper, you may gain a foot, maybe two at most, as you kind of go along this. But if this is at four feet at regular water level, and it drops by two feet, you're now in two feet of water in a boat that probably shouldn't be in two feet of water. So just being able to not utilize these along the shoreline and having it go up 220 feet is because of the water depths. Other than that, we would be able to come up with a better way to do it, but because those water depths are so low, and they continue to go lower and lower, as I've heard from many people over the last couple of years, you know, it just keeps getting lower and lower, depending on, you know, rain or drought or whatever it gets to be. That's really the only reason it needs to be that long. But if we don't make it that long, then we lose a lot of what we're, what we're aiming to do. And, and we're not aiming to get more slips just so that we more utilize it for being on the lake, and so that way people don't come in and off the lake so frequently.
Thank you. And to the second point along that line, I've asked you before, but just for clarification for the group. So you are reducing the number of permitted slips from 38 to 32?
Correct.
And you're not allowing moorings anymore, which Beaverbrook did, I believe?
Yes.
And then one actual question, the one person you mentioned who is within the view line of the dock.
Yes.
That person, have you gotten in touch with them?
I haven't got a chance to speak to him. I reached out to him. I actually went to his house. He just lived just up the road from us, and I didn't get a chance. I went over yesterday and he was not there. So I didn't get an opportunity to speak with him. But he's, so this isn't, this isn't the proposed dock that we're, that we're talking about. This is actually, so if you, I know it's, you know, based on certain things, but this is over 500 feet from his property, so it's more of a courtesy visit, and I have talked to him about it before, but I haven't talked to him the last, since, since the last presentation.
But you've spoken to him before?
Yes.
And did he have a response?
Uh, he didn't necessarily have a yay or nay. He just said, you know, you guys remember everything on that.
So he's aware, he's aware of it?
Yes, he's aware of my proposal, yes, whether it happened or not.
Sure.
Yes, Jeremy, I just wanted to clarify what you said about, there's going to be 32 slips you're requesting on a 220-foot dock. Am I correct?
32 slips total. Eight are on another.
Eight on another and then 27 on the longer one. 24, my math's great. So, and before there were 20 or 38 slips? And how many, were they the same size in terms of the size of the slip that the boat could get in? Are these larger?
The, the system itself, these, these fingers that come up are not larger than the ones he had there. So these ones that he had out here, I believe, were 20 feet long. These are 18, either 18 or 20.
Okay.
I can't remember which one, because they vary. This one's a little bit shorter than this one. It just depends on which boat we put on which dock.
And you said that you didn't anticipate that it's going to be, because you believe that most of the people that's going to put slips on this dock are going to be campers at your campground. Is that correct?
All of them.
All of them.
Yes.
So therefore, the usage is never going to be more than 32. Is that correct?
For the dock system.
For the dock system.
Yep.
But they could launch from the public dock if they wanted to and pull in your every, in and out every day, which probably not likely if they're camping, right? Okay, I'm just going to be clear about that. So, and you're saying that the, these docks are not going to create as much sedimentation and disturbance on the waterfront as you believe the old system did, because you had to move them around in the old system. Is that correct?
Correct.
You don't have any usage information on the old system provided by the former campground owner, do you? How much usage were their docks, slips were getting?
No, only be, the reason I don't have any information is because of how many moorings that they had out there. So he allowed people to moor for a lot cheaper than he allowed people to dock. So just because there were, you know, 38 slips out there, if only 50% were used, but he had 19 moorings out there? I mean, it kind of negates the, any, any, you know, number that I would have at all, because a lot of the moorings weren't around boats, so I don't, I can't be 100% accurate on any number for the actual slips that he sold. A lot of this stuff does get jumbled in acquisitions as well. I mean, I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even try to guess or think that the number's accurate or matches your focus.
Hi, Jeremy. Just for clarification, at the end of this proposal, the end of the proposed dock, if you were to draw a horizontal line to the left of the dock?
Yep.
That's your, the end of your property, am I right?
So everyone, it's right in, it's, our property line's right in here. So if you drew a line from here, straight across?
Thanks. And just for clarification, from what I recall from our terrain walk, that area, to the south of that, that's where your primary swim area is, am I right?
Yep. This is, this is our swim area.
Got it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any questions, Tom?
No, I've reviewed the video from last time, so I was familiar with that. I've seen these pictures all before. I thought that came to mind, with the improved docking system, you talked about how the capacity where they were with the old docks, and some of that might have been because as the season went on, you could even use some of those docks. You're hoping to attract more business with a better system, and you're hoping to increase revenue because you're going to have more people docked as opposed to moorings. I don't know if you're also going to have moorings available to people, if it's, you know?
Nope. So with the dock system, we eliminate any moorings from our property.
Yeah.
Yep.
And but I more attractive, it's an upgrade, so you may get more people coming to the campground, but you're not accommodating a significant number more. I'm seeing how you can be with only.
Okay. If there are any further questions from the board, then I will open a public comment.
Anyway.
All right. I'm going to go from right to left.
So. A couple things.
Sorry, could you please state your name?
John Yendra. I'm on the board of ALIC, the Interstata Lake Improvement Corporation. So the boat launch at the end of the rope, at the end of the lake, can only accommodate about 18 trailers, right? So when that first went in, we were concerned about the boat traffic. So that was all boat traffic that they can go in. Okay. Now, if you rehab your boat trailer or your boat launch at your place, it's not going to have a significant impact on the lake. That's what they're for. There's built, the, the, the core of engineers are going to come in and say that it's built away so that it's not going to affect the lake so much, okay? Now, 38 slips, not really. I used to fish and hunt around there all the time. There were never that many. There were never that many boats moored, okay? So 38 is a number that's being used to say, okay, we're going to go from 38 to 32, it's going to be a decrease. But I'm not sure that's actually factual, okay? So the biggest concern that we have with ALIC is the boat traffic, right? So traffic on the lake. In and out, I know if they have, you know, they've been very helpful, and they've been very good about considering having a you know, a boat inspection service, you know, so that people who are coming in and out aren't going to bring things into the lake, and that's really great. We appreciate that. But that doesn't change the fact that there are going to be more boats on. And that's a problem in many ways. We have conservation areas on the lake that people will start using when they're, it's regulated, and I've been on the lake enough to know that people don't pay attention to them. And so it's going to create some trouble. And so we're very concerned about the number of boat slips. And we would be in favor of having the length of the dock and having the number of boat slips. We would be, you know, our, our organization would be agreeable to that, and we think that that would be a good compromise for the lake.
John, do you wish to take that?
Having, you know, like, it's, I don't know, 220, you make it 110, or, you know, 38 or 32 slips, you make 16 slips. I think yacht club right now is 135, was that three? Yeah, if you, that would be as long as the yacht club. But of course, the yacht club dock is basically, that's the, they use their dock to, to partition their swim.
That's just the 30-second.
Okay.
30-second.
I said, I'll be.
Can I just ask you to restate this? You said ALIC. What does that stand for?
Well, let me tell you. I'll take 30 seconds to tell you. If you don't know what ALIC is, ALIC is an organization that's been around for how long, buddy? 20 years?
No, much longer than that.
20 years. And you know the reason you know there's no foil on the lake? Because of ALIC and Bud, because he has a Eyes on the Water program that looks for that stuff, and if we didn't have that, we would be oblivious to the fact that there was a mill foil on testation. We've also been
You've got time.
Okay.
You can come back when.
Okay. But it stands for Anderson Lake Improvement.
Want to read the question from Zoom? Just read the first question, yeah. One at a time.
One at a time.
Alright, so Manuel Rocha says, I'm concerned for the impact. Five thousand transient uninvested tourists whose environmental ethics are unknown in their boats. Concerned of the possible negative impact. Sorry, it's so easy to scroll. Concerned of the possible negative impact it will have on the lake and its ecosystem, especially the wildlife. Does Jellystone have an environmental sustainability plan? Does it address these concerns, including proper lake ethics and ecological ethics?
I've, uh, sort of two small clarification points before I turn that over to Jeremy. Uh, one, for the Zoom audience. Um, please remember to put your questions in the chat rather than raising your hand on Zoom. Okay, we're only taking questions in the chat. Um, and two, just sort of a note on that, um, to be clear. We're only talking tonight about the dock application and so the number of campers, et cetera. Well, we totally recognize people may have concerns. It's not at issue tonight. We're just talking about the docks.
One, one second.
Yeah.
You don't have to keep your hand up. We're going to take one from the audience, then one from Zoom, and then we'll come back to the audience, so keep your muscles loose. Jeremy?
Uh, though we don't necessarily have a full-blown ecological team. Uh, we have properties on a lot of lakes across the entire country that do this all the time. Uh, with, you know, minimal, very minimal impact to any ecological issues, uh, stemming from those. Uh, so, we are very eco-friendly. We make sure that we go above and beyond to, to ensure that. Because our business is based on being in the wild, being on lakes, fishing, hunting. Hunting, because we're a campground, but, you know, being outdoors and, and that whole aspect of, you know, ecologicness is, is us. That's how we exist as a company, so, um, you know, we, we're very cautious of everything going on, which is why we do our development. To make sure that we're not in wetlands, that we, you know, talk to inland fishery and, and go above and beyond and make sure that we have those points, uh, for these presentations.
Uh, I was going to go right to left.
I'm Mary Ann Matson. Before I ask my question, I just want to point out that I made a visual. I brought my spring as promised. It's outside. I figured it was more effective that way. So before you take a boat, if you would like to see a visual, it's outside. My question, Jeremy, is where's the boat launch going to be? Because I don't know where it was before. I kind of think I missed it on the tour. And I just want to clarify, you said there could be as many as many other boats a day coming in and out on top of the thirty-two. Um, who are already docked, docked. So that is a huge increase in.
So the, so the boat launch is where it was existing. So it's actually in this tree line here.
Okay, I just said.
Yep. Um, and, and the, the twenty boats, it's, it's, so essentially it doesn't, doesn't matter where these. It doesn't matter where the boats come from, but it, at any point in time, there are boats that can access the lake outside of those thirty-two slips, whether it are property or the public. And that's really one of the, the, the slips has nothing to do with the interference of boats on the lake. It has to do with boats staying on the lake instead of being pulled in and put back, you know, pulled out and put back. Is, is really what my drive is. So that way we can eliminate having to do so many boat inspections. We're going to be doing boat inspections on property and the more they pull their boat out, we have to do more boat inspections. Or they pull it out, water level is so low, they go to the public boat launch and then nobody's doing inspection. So really, it's more for the safety of the lake than it is for the functionality of, you know, the dock system. The, this, this really stems all around the safety of the lake and making sure that we're preserving the lake that all of us want to preserve. And be able to use for years and years.
Jeremy, so what you're saying is that there's no inspection of boats going into public boats lines? Is that inaccurate?
No, I mean, I know that, that there are some.
Okay. But not as extensive as you hope to have when, in your campground, is that correct?
Correct.
And as far as ethics, you're, you're talking about a family campground, if I recall, our. Tour, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Family campground, this was, this is depicted Yellowstone, Yellowstone, Yellowstone.
Jellystone.
Jellystone, alright. It'll be there, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Family campground.
Got it.
Alright, next question is from, uh, sorry, next question is from Zoom.
Bahar Utam asks, will there be signs to slow down boat traffic so that not to endanger swimmers?
Good question.
Uh, so I have been working with Lighty and Whitney with the Thirty Mile River for proper signage for our beach frontage for one erosion. And for speed limits coming in and out of our voting area, uh, so that way we can properly warn it, uh, for people that are actually on their boats. Uh, we're also working on, uh, noise level signs as well, so that way while people are out on the lake. Hopefully, the signs that they see going across our dock will negate them from having those loud, uh, radios on the lake quite so much.
We'll use our next, and then right to left.
So I'm Buddy Cummings. I'm the president of the Lake Association. I didn't think I was going to say much today, but I do have a little bit to say. And that is, um, I think I really appreciate the fact that, that, um. You know, you've got the CDI program and that this dock is going to be far superior to the old docking system. And, but I am concerned about the length and the number of slips. And I under, I also understand what you're saying about a lot of people, you know, limiting the number of boats going in and out every day, but it also seems like. If people have to do that, it's going to be less convenient for them. They will tend not to go in as much. I don't know. I don't, I don't have any evidence to say that, but. And in terms of what I have in W said, I, I definitely agree with them that, that just the dock itself will not have a direct impact on. Wildlife or any endangered species in the area. As far as I know, there are no endangered species in that part of the lake. But I believe it will have an indirect impact on wildlife and erosion of the shoreline. Because of potential increased boat traffic. That, um, that, uh, the increased boat traffic. Um, you know, has an impact on wounds and other wildlife. More boat traffic along the shoreline creates more weight, creates more erosion and so on. Um, and when you say thirty-eight, I think you said to me that you were also counting moorings. When you've got that, that number, but if you do just look at the, at the.
Thirty seconds.
The, the, the old docks, those are, I count them as fifteen feet long. I count it as five. So that's like, what, seventy-five feet? And, and then if you count the number of slips there, you've got maybe ten. Plus twenty-two from the other one, uh, or twelve from the other one is a total of twenty-two. So I don't, I don't count, I count more like twenty, twenty-two slips and, and a much shorter dock. So I just wanted to, to say that. And I, I was, I went back and looked at some of the old Google Earth stuff and that's the most I could find on, on those maps.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask Jeremy, the, uh, how did you determine how many slips you wanted on this?
So I, uh, I actually went back to two thousand and eleven and on, so basically the last, uh, ten years. And looked at all of the aerial views I could find, uh, and as I worked through those, uh, the, the maximum that they had at one time was thirty-eight. Uh, slips. Uh, so if you looked, uh, back in about two thousand and eleven, they had eight on this one. Um, they had all of these that were in here and they also had, uh, eight slips that were on this side, so. And then at, over time, uh, they, you know, they kind of slowly got rid of some of them, um, and I'm not sure why they did. Uh, but overall, you know, that thirty, thirty-eight number kind of just came in and out, plus with the moorings that are there. Uh, currently, uh, that are just strewn in that Gulf, uh, essentially, you know, putting, kind of piecing things together. That was the most accurate number I could. There was, there's no exact science when it comes to, you know, determining exactly how many he had, especially with the way that they were oriented onshore. Um, there were some that I actually saw in person, uh, where the pylons are actually here, but you can't see it in the picture. Those ones I didn't even count because I couldn't have a visual, uh, for anybody to determine, you know, that they were there. But if you walk our property, you can see pylons, you know, metal pylons going in all around this backwater, but you can't actually see them in the aerial because the trees are covered. Um, so I did the most accurate count that I could. Um, whether it was thirty-four or forty-two, you know, there's no exact number in there. Thirty-eight was a number that I could consistently come out with. Whether it was moorings or the boat slips along the shore with the three.
So are you saying that you, you maximize the amount that you felt you could, could get at thirty-two slips? You thought that was an appropriate number?
I thought it was an appropriate number to ask for based on what was there before and what we're trying to do with our system. Um, I, I honestly think I could have asked for more or, you know, I, I probably wouldn't have asked for less essentially. Um, I think thirty-two is a, a good number for a, for a property at our, our size in the code that we're at with the business that we're trying to do. Thirty-two was the number that we were looking for.
I guess to Mr. Cummings' point though, um. You know, you yourself described the previous structures as, um. Not in the best condition, attracting people to use them or even able to have anyone use them. You are doing everything to maximize, uh, the usage and make sure that you get more traffic. You attract more boats onto the lake than the former setup was able to accommodate.
What we're doing is making it better for people to stay on the lake instead of pulling their boat off and going back.
I see improvements, definitely.
That's what the improvement is for. If, 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 if somebody hadn't seen the system before, you, you'd know that it, just the improvement itself is, is, you know, worth. The bearing of the lake.
My name is Bill Messer. I'm vice president of Anderson Lake Improvement Corporation, previous president and. Doing all the water chemistry for the last seventeen years on the lake, uh, except for last year, but my business system's too great. The lake is a fragile lake. It's a very precious commodity. But I've been telling everyone with ALIC and that knows me, this is a very fragile situation. And we have bottoms that are mud in the lake. It's a shallow lake. It's rocky. And it doesn't take much for the winds or boat traffic to stir up the mud bottoms. Same is true for the Dead River. And the, the problem here is that we had a really bad out situation last year. The one before that was, I think, nineteen ninety-one, if I'm not mistaken. I've been predicting that this was going to happen because even though the clarity was good, we were, we were very fragile, especially July and August. And with this new system, it's a business. You're going to, you have to bring in campers and, and the lake is their attraction. And so to get any significant increase in boat traffic will be a real problem because it's going to stir up the bottoms. And, and because this is a shallow area, but even, there's so many areas in the lake that are shallow. You look at the Dead River, it's a source of major pollution from the paper mills over hundreds of years. That has dropped the sediment and when we have a backflow, that comes right back to the Anderson Lake.
Thirty seconds.
So, what, what I'm saying is that, yeah, it's, it's great about what you're doing on this shoreline. The increase in boat traffic is going to have a significant detriment to our lake quality.
Thank you. Do you want to respond, Jeremy?
Uh, I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to continue to say the same thing over and over. Essentially, um. We're not, we're not trying to increase boat traffic right now. We haven't expanded the property. We haven't done anything of the nature. And for the dock system that we're putting in essentially is to replace the old system after there. So the boat traffic. I do understand the concern with the boat traffic and everything that goes along with it. Um, but I, I want to make sure that the, the right reason for us putting this system in is, is the reason that's out there. Not to increase the boat traffic, but to better the quality of the lake on our end and on for everybody. Um, and, and that's really what this system is about.
Next question from Zoom.
Okay, I'm going to read for a minute. I'm going to read a statement and then I'll leave a question. Robin Barnes, um, also on behalf of ALIC. It says, the old docks were partly decrepit. Several were rarely used. Normally no more than four to five boats were docked at any one time. The proposed two-hundred-and-twenty-foot dock would dramatically increase the number, the actual usable number of slips and thus potentially would increase. Greatly increase boat traffic on the lake. Uh, two-hundred-and-twenty feet feels somewhat misleading because the dock would start at the end of a small spit of land. And that, then I have a question from Charlie.
For the next.
Okay.
The audience. Unless he has a retort to that. I'm simply.
In the backseat.
Andrew Davis. I'm a former member of the Anderson Lake Improvement Corporation. But I'm not sure the planning board knows, uh, and many people may not know that the town. Enforced, voted on and enforced a mooring ordinance last year at town meeting. That mooring ordinance, if you go to the town website, is not listed under ordinances, unfortunately. But because of that, uh, by state law, the town has to have a harbor master. And by state law, the harbor master is in control of moorings and docks. Uh, it's a purban. And so, I'm just curious whether the planning board has, uh, thought of this. Consulted our harbor master if we have one yet. And if not, um, I'm curious to know. In our mooring ordinance, if you go and look, what the state requires. Um, why we're not listening to a harbor master to decide this decision.
Thank you.
Aaron, Aaron, do you have any information that you can add to that?
The one ordinance that was written is, was written exclusively, the way it was written. Was written exclusively for the yacht club.
Okay, Aaron, can you stick out the cycles here?
Warrant ordinance that was written, was written exclusively for the yacht club. And, uh, it also excludes the need for a harbor master. It actually accepts the way the provision in that, the way it was written. It took out the, put the need for a harbor master.
If you look at the.
Sir, your, your time's up. You'll have to come back.
If you look at the mooring ordinance, the, it says it's not following state law. And according to the attorney general of the state of Maine, a town can only make state law. Uh, more, uh, restrictive. They can't loosen state law. So if the planning board wants to go against state law on this, uh, they can, as the town did.
So please don't view this as argumentative, but are you saying we are delinquent in our responsibilities by not having a harbor master?
Yeah.
Or Anderson Lake.
It's absolutely true. By state law, we're, we're, we have to.
Okay. And. Cut this off on both ends, sorry.
And, no, I just want, I, I don't know if the board was aware.
Your two minutes are up, sir.
Come back. Heard your point and I appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else?
There's some disagreement between the town and the state attorney general's office on this and our legal counsel. We've been around the, the, and around this a little bit with this.
I've read the letters, yes. Yeah.
Zoom question?
This is a different topic. Every summer boater show up at neighboring beaches to spend hours each time. These are privately owned properties and they come and go without permission. Assuming that it's okay to use the beaches without the owner's permission. Will Jellystone notify campers that properties along the lake need owner's permission before using these privately owned beaches? And also, will the contracts for campers include language indicating that personal water crafts are prohibited on Anderson Lake?
So any new contract that we, uh, have for seasonals, uh, would have some type of verbiage in there that they are restricted to our property. Uh, or the lake itself and not to anybody else's. I have been working, I, I've talked to some people that came to take tours about their personal beaches. We are putting verbiage at our front office that will be added to all campers in their package when they arrive. Uh, and also there'll be signage at the waterfront, uh, for people to read before they get on their boats, uh, not to go onto other people's properties.
Personal water craft as well?
Excuse me?
Personal water craft, that was a second part of the question.
So going on to somebody else's personal water?
I mean, he used.
Oh, Jessie's one we use. Yeah, there's no Jessie.
My name's Question.
Uh, Nancy Hassan, because I have a place on the south end of the lake opposite. And, um, if it was five years ago, I, I'd be very concerned about this, but, uh, the last two years between the invasives. And then the terrible out of bloom last year. Um, I'm just so worried about the lake. And I think Robin Barnes' comment online about the fact that really, um, I kayak some. When, uh, Beaverbrook was there, I wouldn't see more than four or five boats over there. So the thirty-eight is theoretical in my mind. To me, this is a huge change. It's incredibly fragile lake now and, uh. My heart's very worried.
Thank you. You have another Zoom question?
I have one more from Jamie Isaacson, uh, asking if Jellystone can prove there were thirty-eight total boat slips.
Uh, at this point, I, I, there, there's no actual. At this point, I, I, there's, there's no actual physical proof. Though there may not have been boats in every slip, a lot of those slips were existing at the time. Whether there were, you know, five boats on those slips out of the thirty-eight, um, that doesn't. There's, there's no exception to the fact that there were slips there that could have been utilized. There, there's no solid number that I can propose. Um, you know, thirty-eight was really my, you know, really best estimate of what was there present, uh, prior to our acquisition.
Jeremy, I, I just wanted to ask you a question about, um, you said you got a letter from, I think it was Don, John, Dear John letter. And it was, there was, uh, did we get that in the?
It's right here. Um, I, I brought it in just so that everybody could, uh, do it if they wanted to, from inland fisheries. So their team did an assessment, uh, on the area, uh, just to make sure that there wasn't anything there that would be disturbed.
And also, uh, did you get a letter from? The organization? ALEC.
There you go.
Um, I didn't get a letter from them. I, you know, I have hit, hit towards to a couple of, uh, of them, uh, you know, and, and discussed what was, what we're proposing and where it was going to go. Uh, but I did not reach out for it.
All right. That was not my question. Zoom, but, or did we just do? Sorry. Thank you. You have not spoken yet, sir, in the front?
Yeah, I'm Mike Cox. And, uh, I can concur and support everything people are saying. This is me. For the last eleven, twelve years. So the boat traffic actually with Beaver Brook has been fairly minimal. Over those twelve years. I don't have a cap. But when people have observed, I would concur with. So I have, besides. My concerns for an environmentally fragile lake. I have personal concerns. Noise concerns, boat regulation concerns. Right now you have two boats this last weekend. Full throttle out of the code. When the lake gets shallow, that'd be pretty dangerous. There is a buoy out here that signifies the shallow. And you really need to, people need to cut the throttle. Creating the unnatural wake with this closed shoreline causes erosion. There are wounds right on your, your campsite nesting. They nest on the water's edge. A natural wake. Can realize the eggs coming back into the, yeah. Into the lake. So I'm concerned about boat regulation. I don't know what you do for fuel for these boats and the potential for pollution there. Not sure why you need a swimming dock. In an area seems that'll make it risky. It's so shallow. People jumping or diving on. Now assuming. Is this just an added dock for more boat slips, the one by Chuck's house?
Yeah, that one was existing.
So peace and quiet is. Primary does. These three homes here are. Year-round homes. We've invested in these properties. We've retired here. Rather listen to the geese, the ducks and the wolves and the boats. Ever any wavefront noise. You had a couple of tank campers this last weekend playing music. I have a big property. If you hear that all the way to Moose, Red Road. So those are the concerns that I have.
Thank you. Anybody else?
This will be my second time around, but this is the right timing.
Uh, sure. I think the, oh, um, so woman here in front hasn't spoken yet.
My name is Betsy Clark and I live down at the, uh, Anderskogan Lake as well. And I too have never seen thirty-eight boats in and out of that hood in one time, not, not seen the slips. According to the zoning ordinances, for every two hundred and fifty feet of shore frontage, you're allowed two slips. Jeremy's asking for thirty-two slips. They do not have four thousand feet of shore frontage there. Not even close to it.
That's not, that's not our ordinance. The ordinance says they can have a, they can have a dock. Two docks. Nothing in ordinance specifies number of slips.
Well.
For, um, shoreline.
Residential, I guess, it does. Residential it does. And I read, I read this, it says two slips, not to exceed a forty-quit dock.
Two docks. Two docks.
If I may, sure, if I may. What you're confusing is, is that what you're talking about is the land use ordinance. And you're, you're right. Every two hundred and fifty feet, you're allowed a dock. Please, you're allowed a dock with two slips. There is another ordinance, which is the RV trailer park ordinance that was created for the different camps around the lake. Camp Anderskogan. We have the, uh, yacht club. There's a couple others. For those, the, uh, planning board is given discretion to hear an argument for these commercial properties as to why. There's, you know, what length they should be and how many they can handle. They also have to take into account pre-existing non-conforming areas. Beaver Brook's part of that, that, you know, they have to allow what's already been there for years. Land use. So there's two different ordinances. You're, you're quoting the one for the, uh, the people that live on the lake.
I lost the time. It's still, I, I've never seen thirty-eight slips over there. Uh, I, I think last week or two weeks ago, Doug had asked a question about the comparison to the Anderskogan Yacht Club dock. And, um, you might want to take a look at this visual. This shows you the Anderskogan Yacht Club dock. Um, six feet wide, hundred and thirty-six feet, just one piece at the end so boats can pull up. This is what in comparison it would look like, two hundred and twenty feet with the twenty-four slips.
Having jumped off that dock too many times, I know, and I went and measured it. I'm aware. Thank you, man.
Yeah. And, and, you know, they, they, they want this length of a dock. Due to the shallowness of the code. But they bought the property knowing that the code was shallow. And, you know, they didn't know that it was that shallow. You know, I, I'm just. So it's just.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. No more online questions?
Um, Robin Barnes says, so ALEC's proposal is for a dock half as long and with half as many slips as the two hundred and twenty foot that's being applied for. Is that correct? In light of the concerns expressed here, would that not be a reasonable compromise? This is the last thing I have on the chat.
You, you've not spoken before?
I'm Lynette Stennerford and I don't live on the lake, but I've been using the lake for thirty-five years. And I think Jeremy said it best in the beginning when he said that we can't predict the future. And we, we do, we do not know what Jellystone would look like with the marketing power of Northgate behind it. And the improvements, the added amenities, making it a nicer place is, the goal is to increase the number of people that come. And so maybe none of us have ever seen thirty or even twenty boats there at one time. But if the marketing money builds the business the way they want to build the business, we will see those slips filled. And we will see boats coming in and out of the lake. If they are successful, and they have been successful. They have. They have, um, campgrounds all over the country. They know how to do this and they know how to get people there. And if we are not careful, this will look very different in five years. And I'm not sure if we grant this, that we can go backwards.
Okay. Thank you. No more Zoom. I believe the, um, gentleman in the green sweater has entered first to speak second.
Sorry, I, I get nervous when I speak and I wasn't meaning to be argumentative. I just wanted the planning board to know that we had a mooring ordinance. Because I think that a lot of people don't know that. And by state law, uh, in that mooring ordinance, I think that a harbor master should be involved in this decision.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, sir.
Yeah, my last shot of this, I can say. And I'm sorry, what are your first names? I, Jeremy, Jeremy. When, um, Jellystone bought the property, obviously you did a business model projections study. Okay, well, the question's going to go put here. It's allowed. So.
Look at him. That's fine.
What is that?
You can look wherever you want.
Okay, so, thank you. So was the business model predicated on this many boat slips? Keep in mind that you have also your own launch dock, which will then supplement whatever slips you have. But I mean, is this, you, you must have. Your company must have looked at this, will something like this pass on a lake that's so fragile?
So, Jeremy, do you have a response?
So, so this proposal is, is, has nothing to do with the expansion of my park, our park. This expansion has to do with replacing what was there with a better product, simply that. This has nothing, this is no re, you know, reflection on, you know, any future plans if the, you know, if they come to fruition.
Is your profitability based on this going through, or are you going to be able to make a go of it with, let's say, half the number of slips?
Uh, is it possible for us to survive with half the slips? Absolutely. Would we necessarily want to, so that way we lessen, you know, the opportunity to leave people's boats on the, on the water to make it safer for the lake?
I, I don't agree with the safety for the lake to, to see how this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, that's, sorry. It's unidirectional conversation, unfortunately, is the format.
So. A question about how the planning board operates, right?
Yes.
So it seems to me that there's a question here about, uh, you know, like if you have a non-conforming camp, right? Then you, you're allowed to continue to use it in that one, right? So are you bound by the number that he's given us? Um, about the pre-existing slips? And is there really any decision that you can make other than to say, okay, you can have all those slips?
I, uh, I guess I, I would speak to that, no more lines. So two, two things that I think are relevant. So there is no particular permitted number of slips for Beaver Brook. And our ordinances do not speak specifically to permit to slip number for commercial uses like this. Um, so there are no specific guidelines. It is significant that, um, Jellystone is within their rights to use the current infrastructure. So if they wanted, they could put their, all these existing docks he's talking about back in and use them. And so in that sense, we are not, we can't really go and tell Jellystone, you can only have ten slips. We can say you can't have this new one. You have to use the old ones. But it's not, it's, it is not in the planning board's peruse.
So you can take all this information that we're given, right? And all the concerns about the people who live on the lake. And then you can make a decision to deny. The request or to make it, you know, pare it down. And you're not obligated to make any other decision. You can make a decision based on the facts that you've been given and the thoughts that you have about this. And I respect that, but I just, I just didn't want to feel that this was, you know, they had thirty-eight, so they're going to have thirty-eight.
No, and I think, I think, uh, none of this. I thought you were going to end that statement by saying, was this a waste of time?
What? No, 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 it's a waste of time to talk about things, right? That's the only way we look.
Quite. One of the things that I think, um, certainly has, uh, been pointed out, and it's not that it wasn't followed up before, because you've had questions about how the thirty-eight was arrived at and thirty, thirty-two. Just look at it on paper. Sounds like it's an improvement and a logical improvement, right? Um, I think as we've gotten a little bit deeper into how that number was arrived at, as we're talking about moorings versus, uh, slips. You know, I think that, that's certainly not as black and white as, um, it, it looks on a piece of paper. I think that's something that will factor into us in thinking. And there've been a lot of other points that were brought up, that were also directly relevant to. Uh, whether it is, um, a replacement, just a replacement, or it is a significant. And one further thing I guess I would also say to that is just to clarify the planning board's role. Our role is to interpret whether it conforms to our ordinances. It's not to say like, you know, do we like this? Do we not like this? That's not our job. Our job is to say, does this, does this?
So what ordinance, what ordinance, I mean, if you're saying, I mean, I mean, there, is there an ordinance about boat traffic? I mean, is there an ordinance about the, the fragility of the lake? And so, you know, I'm trying to understand, like, what, how are you going to use this to make a decision that isn't exactly what they want? Right? And so if that's what you do, and I'm not telling you how to make a decision. But all I'm saying is, it sounds to me from what you said. How much you can do. And, and I'm not sure that I like that answer.
Um, well, I'm going to have to stop because again, we're not.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's not a discussion format. I guess I'll just, but I, I will just repeat that the planning board can come to any decision that it feels correct, but it has to be based on the ordinances. That's how, that's essentially how this works.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand what the ordinance is.
Pretty lengthy.
Okay, okay. Is it online?
It is online.
Okay. And it's an ordinance regarding docks for camps and such.
Yes.
Okay. Well, did you read it out last time? Or was that just the application?
It's long.
I mean.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good comments. All right.
Yes.
Sorry. Uh, you've spoken twice, so I was going to let her speak a second time.
You know, so I do have the ordinance here and I, I just would like some clarification because under the camp ground ordinance. For referring to the dock, it says, you know, only one pier dock shall emanate from shoreline for two hundred feet of shore frontage. For installation and that of unattached swimming floats shall be in accordance with the provisions of the Part One, Article Five, Section Eight of the land zoning ordinance. That's the land zoning ordinance. It says two slips per dock.
It's not, well, let's.
I don't understand.
If I, if I may, I may. There, there are various ordinances in ways. There is a land use ordinance. And then there's also one that's, can I have the? Section D of the recreational vehicle and park ordinance. Hang on one second. Here it is, right here. So if you go to the land use ordinance towards the back. Can you help me out? Oh, this is not the whole one.
I need one. Tabs, it's easy.
Well, either with the tabs. Sorry. There we go. Right. So if you go into the zoning, there's a section that's Town of Way Mobile Home Park Recreational Vehicle Park and Campground Ordinance. Adopted March first, nineteen seventy-one. And it goes through the regulations as a fit to campgrounds and commercial grounds. And so.
Section two, Part C, Number Three.
Thank you. Somebody have a hand? All right. So here you go. Dock reg ordinances. Go with me. Okay. So if you go to section two, item C, minimum lot size. Third item, only one dock appear, as you said, shall emanate from the shoreline, two hundred and fifty feet shore frontage. Installation that of unattached swimming floats, as you said. Except the maximum dimensions of said piers, docks, or floats may be determined by the planning board based on projected use. Remind. Remember that they had two of the, the docks they currently have are pre-existing non-conforming, they're here for an extra dock. So that's.
Right, but it does say in accordance to the provisions of the Article Five Section F, and that Article Five Section F. Is what says that said piers and docks shall not extend, well, okay, for seven forty feet, which that's what you're dealing with. Shall not consist of more than two slips. So when, it does say under the campground piece, except maximum dimensions of said piers, docks, or floats. May be determined by the planning board based on projected use, doesn't say number of slips on there, I get it. But why does that piece then refer you to the provisions of Article Five Section F? Which said two slips per forty foot dock or per, 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 per two hundred feet of frontage? I mean, it's referring to, back to that ordinance. So. Uh, you know. Second time?
Yes.
So we keep, we keep saying that the planning board may agree to make adjustments, the planning board may. Has the planning board ever, is there any record of an exception being granted to Beaverbrook in the past? And I will tell you that Betsy and I spent about four hours today going through two files at the town office. Of permitting for Beaverbrook and found nothing, nothing. With respect to docks. And that, when we were looking for it to say, okay, you know, back in nineteen ninety, they were permitted for thirty-eight slips. Just because they had them didn't mean they should have them. And if things were placed. In, not, in non-compliance with existing ordinances, they're not entitled to keep them.
So man, I, I, I just like to comment on that and, and both have been doing a lot of reading too. Some of them spent my career reading specific instructions to make sure correct things are done so people's lives are safe. And I hope that doesn't sound pompous, but. I actually went on the website for the state and there is no existing law by law. Or anything other than a guideline about how long a dock can be. And it's in accordance with safety. It's like a rule of thumb in that here's the guidelines, it can, there is no, nothing that says it can't be more than twenty-five feet, it can't be more than two hundred feet. It has to be in accordance with safety. So there's some vagueness here, you're absolutely right. And please believe me, we're, we're wrestling with this and trying to make the best decision and to quote our chair, Andy's right. We have to interpret these ordinances as best we possibly can. And like in preference, left the building a long time ago.
And I'm not asking you to do it.
I understand that.
I'm just asking you to look back and see if it was ever permitted. Because a lot of what's being asked for is based on what was already there. And, and we haven't seen any evidence that what was there was ever allowed or there.
Alright, thank you, just one point, order that I'll make on that. It's not correct to say that Beaverbrook was in violation of the ordinance because the ordinance explicitly says that there is discretion for commercial uses. Which we see around the lake for every commercial use, so it's just, just that it's not accurate to say that the existing use is in violation. It was. Just do a time check, it is.
Yeah, I, you've heard enough from me, I'm sure. Just one last thing, and then this, what I heard from there was projected use, right? That you can make a decision based on projected use. And so you might want to consider arguments about what we think the projected use is going to be, and it doesn't mean that it can't be projected overuse, right? It just means based on the way this is going to be used in the lake. And our contention is, is that the use is probably going to be detrimental because it's going to be more boats on the lake. And that's, I think that's the essence of our argument as to why we think it ought to be paired.
Absolutely, last time. Got a decision to make and whether it was thirty-eight, it was, you know, permitted or not permitted. They said this lake is fragile, what happened last year, and easily we expect it's going to happen again. If it does happen, everybody's property values are going to get down on the toilet, okay? And, and you, so this could be really significant negative effect on this area. So you mentioned safety in terms of, well, you know, the dock can go as long as it can based on safety. Well, what we're talking about is the safety of the lake, that really is what we're talking about, whether it's thirty-eight or whatever. These, whatever was there was in areas that for a good part of the summer, you couldn't have boats. Because of the low water level. Going up two hundred feet means, yeah, now we can have, we can have boats, much more traffic. This guy, you got to really take this into strong consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much, all for speaking. And I think now I'm going to vote to close public discussion, I believe everyone wishes to speak is spoken.
Oh, look for somebody to motion that we close public discussion.
Thank you. Second. All in favor? Hi, okay. Thank you all very much for contributing, we do really appreciate your presence and comments. Uh, no, you don't have to leave, but discussion will not be between, between the board, among the board.
And chatter will interfere with what folks that soon.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public meeting from beginning to start, the public comment period has ended. But you're all welcome to stay here to the end for the public meeting and the vote.
Some discussion about whether or not we should.
Please speak up loud for the public.
Well, I'll, I'll say it, I think there's at least two of us here, I believe we should postpone the votes until we have. Gather information regarding, and I know this is nothing that. The applicant would like to hear, but we would like to get more information about the legal part of it, which I have not. Read anything about the harbor master issue. Uh, so I would like to make a motion that we delay the vote. Until we gather additional information, at least about harbor master input and whether that would be advisable, that's my motion.
I second that because I, I am unclear as to the guidance and the directive. So if the state says we're supposed to have a harbor master and. Aaron has said that there's some confusion between the town of Wayne and the state, I would like clarification on that. So I am hesitant to vote now and I, I second that motion.
Discussion on the motion. Uh, discussion on the motion.
I'm sorry, Andy.
And I guess, I'm just gonna say, I've, I've read the letters between the yacht club. And well, from the yacht club lawyer and the letters around this. And my understanding that this is, is this exclusively yacht club issue? And I personally don't wish to bring that, bring that into here, it was, it was, it was an issue around the fact that the M Stargate Yacht Club had these moorings. In the water for years, they're technically were non-conforming to state regulations. And the, it was, it became somewhat of a bitter fight with the state, struggling for it. Anyway, my understanding is it's a separate issue that I don't, to my understanding, doesn't have bearing on this. And so I, I don't see, I don't see the necessity for looking to that point, that seems to be expanding the scope in a way that potentially problematic. Sorry, I said that, that, to my understanding, that issue, did you hear the first part of what I said? It's a lifelong problem, speak quietly. I'm here a big stick. My, I, I have read the materials from the yacht club around this issue. And my understanding of the issue is that it is a yacht club issue, it was an issue with moorings at the yacht club being non-conforming with the state regulations. Yacht club, one exemption was not granted it, and so. In my view, that is a separate issue that is not really germane to this, and I don't, I don't see a reason to bring discussion of that into this issue. Fair enough, Andy, you've, you've led this group since we came together and I trust your judgment, you've read those letters, fine.
I'll withdraw the.
I'll clarify that my, it's a specific tip that delay was for that reason. It was not necessarily for, if you have any other concerns.
Any concerns?
I definitely have a concern, because while we're here talking about only the docks. Right, docks or anything else you might be trying to look at in and of themselves. Have impacts beyond just, for example, stirring up the ground and the length that it might touch on the bottom. And I think some of those points were brought up in discussion in the group, whether it's, I think these are environmental, potential environmental impacts. By putting a larger structure that accommodates more boats and when we are making our decision based on, to some degree. An improvement from or a replacement of the existing and we're using the information we have to say the existing at thirty-eight moorings. Um, to me that, that, that information is very suspect. Um, and it's accommodating thirty-eight, I'm sorry, slips. And it was thirty-eight to thirty-two, but that's including moorings, there won't be any moorings now. But to me, that's definitely a little fuzzy as we look at it. And some of the points brought up about, okay, there won't be the impact to the, let's say, the launch area, people driving right up on the beaches right around, walking in and out. Uh, however, the boat traffic coming in and out, will that be increased volume affecting? So yes, it's the docks in my opinion that we're supposed to be looking at. How can, how can we not talk about the waves from the docks, literally and figuratively? Um, and so that's why I've got a big concern. So to me, the remedy for that, and I realize time is important to everybody in this room. Environmental impact assessment, something along those lines that can help us to make sure that we're comfortable with the decision that we make. Because if we make a decision one way or the other right now, there are impacts from that decision.
About a reduction of the number of slips. Is that something you guys?
I don't know, but even if we, if we cut it in half, we're still working off potentially faulty numbers. So at what point do we say we should cut the numbers in half if we're not sure if the original one is accurate?
So in fairness to faulty numbers, what used to be Jowett's gas station is now a public boat launch. I've seen more than eighteen trailers there before and some parked on the road, and I know they're not supposed to be there, but they are. So. Let's, you know, let's really look at this from all different lenses and. I like your verbiage. Don't, what'd you say, fuzzy numbers?
Now, we're just talking to each other, right? We're allowed to talk and they, they're listening, so we, we don't have to be so. No, this is actual conversation. And I like, I like the fact that Jeremy actually made me feel better when he answered the question earlier and they asked, is this gonna put you out of business if you can't get a dock to reach it in twenty feet? And his answer was actually not, he's got confidence in the product he's gonna offer, right? We're not gonna put him out of business, we're not closing the deal on it, we're not, we're not saying, okay, this is a no decision. This is something that we're just looking to delay a little bit, let's let you operate while we consider.
The one thing I will say is that we, we do have to confine our considerations to whether the dock meets the ordinance. We can't be broader about like.
But we seem to be lacking a lot of ordinances that are relevant, you know, so. A challenge.
Aaron, no. Public session, public comment has been closed. What?
You have any comments?
Uh, it's not my place, public, it's been closed. Now, if you have a certain offer or question to answer.
The ordinance is that we're actually involved because. It's a dock that's in non-compliance of what is allowed, is that correct or not?
Sorry, say that again.
Are we not involved as planning board, code enforcement officer can't make the decision about the application of permanent? Uh, the planning board has to remake the decision.
I, I think Andy has stated very well, your job is to interpret the ordinance. And take into account what you've been told here at the last two meetings and make a decision based on that. You can make a counter, you can make a request of the applicant, but your job right now is to either. Your job is to either now make a motion to accept, to deny, or to table it for another time. But you need to do something.
So where is your? We could hear that, I know that.
Sorry, the public is.
No, but we should, we should, you know, we're here to hear.
I will try to speak louder, sorry. And I said his role is if they put in a three hundred foot dock to go and bust them.
The code enforcement officer was saying, so your job is to actually have ramifications if what gets approved is in perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess my thoughts center around, they center around the role of the board and that I think there is. Almost any, you know, any town there's reticence around development. And any development has impacts on people, I guess, and you see this in any planning board, any development you go to. Everyone would prefer there was not development and the, but. When somebody purchases property with an existing use, they're permitted to use the property for the use for which they purchased, for which they purchased it. With the number of, and so. With the number of camp sites that they purchased and with the number of existing slips, the fact that the slips were run down, like hard to use. To me is not as germane because they were there, they could have used them, previous use, could have used them when they have bought, bought the property. They were essentially buying the right to use these existing slips. And so what they're putting in. You know, to me, it seems like, it seems like an attempt to fair offer thirty-two slips for. Yeah, how many sites there are.
Two hundred and two.
Yeah, two hundred and two sites. It's, it is, it is development, you know, but given the pre-existing use. That to me seems reasonable and to me it's, it's significant that we don't approve it, they can technically just go back and use the one that they have. Put in just as many boats in a more environmentally destructive way, in a less safe way. With this, they, like the, you know, the length of the dock is immediately shallow. And so to me thirty-two slips feels.
But we don't, we still can't, we still get the fuzzy numbers about the number of slips that were actually there, that's my concern. I don't, I don't hear that there were thirty-eight, not clearly, I hear that there were aerial photographs or, I believe. But there were moorings counted, how many moorings were there that were counted? Uh, maybe there were twelve slips and twenty moorings, I don't, that's not thirty.
We have the diagrams of how many.
Have you looked at?
Yeah, we all saw them.
Yeah, that one, yeah. Does anybody know?
So we know though, we don't have a diagram of the moorings.
Over there, over there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, that, it stinks, and the only, the only thing I would say to that is that that is not necessarily the current applicant's. Yeah, I mean, that, that, it stinks. And the only, the only thing I would say to that is that that is not necessarily the current applicant's fault. I think he all, all that did not keep records.
You speak up, please.
That, the fact that the old.
Sir, you, they got some seats up in front. If you can't hear, please move up a seat.
The fact that the old applicant, um, the fact that the old applicant did not keep records.
Sir, back please.
Well.
It is very hard to hear.
It is.
We kind of want to know who we're gonna vote for to elections based on.
We're not elected.
We're not elected.
We're not elected nor paid.
Okay.
This is just for the fun of it. So, um, what I was saying was that, so Ed pointed out that the um, the fuzziness of around the number of the existing number of slips. Um, prior to that, I've been saying that my my concerns were that they, when, when that, nobody liked, basically to sum up, nobody likes development. We would all prefer that it did not happen. Um, but when a, when you purchase a lot, when you purchase land that has existing, has an existing use, you have the legal right to continue that use in the manner in which it was already existed. Um, and so fact that they have a campground there that had two hundred, two hundred and two sites. And they have a number of boats that they have, like, again, we're talking about the fuzziness around the number of thirty, thirty eight moorings. So for the moment, saying thirty eight moorings, um, the fact that they were not all in use all the time is not necessarily germane. The fact that the previous applicant had them, that the previous applicant had the right to use them, which then means the purchaser of the property still has the right to use them. And so if we say, no, you can't put in a dock, they can just go and still, still have their thirty eight slips. They can just use the existing moorings. They can use the old docking systems they have. And so will potentially have as many boats with a more environmentally destructive system.
Sir, sir, there's no comment from the public at this point.
I'm speaking to you. I'm speaking, uh, I'm speaking to you so that you can hear me. Um, but it's actually discussion amongst the board. Um, thank you. So that, so around the fuzziness of the numbers, what I was saying was that it is, um, I agree that that is very unfortunate and my only comment there is that we need to be clear that it's not on the, it's not the applicant's fault that the previous owner did not keep records. Of how many boats they actually.
Well, let's just look at the number of campsites. How many people in two hundred campsites are gonna have boats if we had to guess? Throw a number up. One in ten?
Maybe.
I don't know either. I.
Uh, yeah, I feel like. Do you have any idea what the ratio of boat owners, boat, uh, people bringing boats is?
Uh, I don't have any data as to that. Um, since we're just a part of the property, it'd be tough for me to say. It's different, you know, property to property depending on the amenities that are out there. So uh, due to the fact that there's, there's no place to get through a lot here. There's, there's a lot of aspects that go into it. Uh, there's no other place to eat on the lake or, you know, all that stuff, you know, negates a lot of people from using that area, so.
From bringing, from bringing boats too, because they can't pull off and get food. They can't get gas. So, so the number of slips that might be needed by your company, all I'm saying is.
Possibly you can ask a question, but you can't have a discussion.
All right.
So you're looking for a merger.
Do we have further thoughts or?
I'm still in a place where, to me, it sounds like we have unanswered questions to be able to make a decision one way or the other right now. And I think even what you just said. Uh, supports that we, I, for example, question was, um, the person who buys his property, the statement they made was a person who comes in, company comes in and buys his property, um, has every right and expectation to be able to continue to use that property in the manner in which it was previously used, right?
Yeah.
Um, okay, I, I would agree with that. I think that's fair. Um, I, if it was me, I would want to be able to do that. Right? But then if the next thing specific to the dock issue is, so um, the way the docks were used previously, we can see there were stated disrepair. There are no records. We can't base anything on that. If we try to make a decision on our own to say, well, what is fair from a numbering perspective, but nobody has an answer to that right now. Maybe we need to research that a little bit. Um, and as we do that, um, you know, I think we can, we can go down the checklist of, of these other points and find out, are they relevant to the docks and to what degree are they relevant to the docks and really think about this and make sure that we're doing our jobs and staying focused on the application at hand. But how in the world can we answer yes or no right now with these things that we're not sure about?
Can you clarify for me just a little bit, like what particularly?
How many slips shouldn't be allowed?
We don't, like, should according to what? Should according to what, I guess?
It's supposed to be continuing to be able to use the business the way that it was previously, right? And we had some numbers that we're not sure of right now. Um, if it's the same, I mean, I don't believe that Jeremy wants to use, wants to, us to park this application or, or deny it and he'll go back and take wherever the remnants of what existed and then put that back in the water. I doubt that's what he wants to do. Right? So I, I don't think that would necessarily be fair to just render that decision and say no. Uh, and by the same token, I don't have, uh, in my mind and I trust my mind for the most part, but I'm listening and taking the inputs from you having gone through, for example, the harbor master issue and mooring, uh, mooring ordinance. I don't have, uh, any way that I, uh, I can, can say no because I've got these other concerns yet.
Well, I think what we are in agreement is, is that he should be allowed to have a dock there and slip, it's just the numbers that we're crunching here, trying to figure out what's appropriate or what's not appropriate. Am I correct? Uh, so we're, we're pretty much in agreement that the dock, it, it may be the length of the dock, the number of slips, the number of boats, the impact that the boats on that, that those slips will have on the water and the Andrus Goggin, which is a delicate, at least from what we're hearing, it's pretty delicate. So, so I'm, I'm gonna ask a question, be pretty blunt here. Jeremy, would um, your company be open to a lesser amount?
Possibly. Uh, you know, we, we do base, we base everything off from, you know, what, what we're looking for at the time. So this number in the thirty two slips is based off of the, you know, two hundred and two permanent sites. Um, you know, like, my company, as best as we are, have a lot of documentation, you know, for all parks. The thirty two slips is actually a lot lower than a lot of my other parks and our other parks in the country. So um, you know, if you look at this compared to a park in New Hampshire, like I said, they're all different. So we, we took that number in accordance to what we thought would be a good fit for this property the way it is.
With that information, I know it's not a conversation, so I'll comment here on that. I don't know that I, I'm sure that's true. I'm sure there are some that have more, uh, more campgrounds and, but a smaller lake and it's sort of smaller and some have a huge lake and or, or, or on the ocean or, I mean, there are a lot of things that, that we.
Uh, so yeah, the only, I guess the, um, like I hear you saying and you saying that you'd like, you know, these are all questions. My, my only guidance, I guess, is that I would like to be clear about the questions we're asking because like, should they be able to have a dock? That's why we're supposed to answer that. You know?
Right.
Um, and the guidance, you know, the, the ordinance, if the ordinance gave us a guidance for number of slips, that would be fantastic. It is not.
Yeah.
And so I would like to have some clear, so I would like to have clear questions that we want to answer if we're gonna, if we're gonna defer.
I think we have a couple already, right? How many, would you like? How many?
One, I know. Well, I mean, it doesn't even have to be. We don't necessarily have to stay with them. I would like, like, if. So.
Well, that we're gonna research.
Andy, I, I, I I'm trying to choose my words carefully here. Um, I'm with you a million percent on, we have to do with what, what the ordinance dictates. But what keeps coming into my head, and I know I got hit a lot playing hockey, but it keeps coming into my head. That you can't swing a dead cat these days without someone talking about the environment. And Andrus Goggin, well, I don't see how we can possibly do this without factoring in what these, this, this proposed infrastructure will do. And I, and I don't know what that looks like right now. I think Ed asked a very good question. I'm just gonna ask publicly and if it's just, if, if we have the authority to ask that.
Can you, will you take a lesser number of slips?
We just, I just did.
Yeah, I know, but so.
A proposal. I mean, if you, if, yeah, we can make a specific proposal if we want. Um,
but how do we base our proposal if we wanted to down it all?
Right.
And, and will it achieve what we're trying to do, which is reduce the impact that boats might have on Andrus Goggin Lake?
I'm tracking.
Environmental.
Yep.
So how do we come up with that number? And Tom's got a very good point. On the heck, we don't, we don't have any. I don't know if we have a number. You, you said you had a number because you had a lot of campgrounds. If I, not a discussion here, a question. You, I had asked that question earlier about that, whether you would, how you came up with the number is what I asked you. And you said, well, I just looked at this and felt that that was a good number for our camp site. But yet you just now said that you guys have, if I researched it, eighty four campgrounds, not you, but there are eighty four franchise campgrounds around the country. Is that a correct number?
No, no, we have thirty five, my, your.
Okay, but I, I'm talking about.
We have, yes, we have a cross.
Cross-country, it's eighty five. So, so information is available to you as to what's suitable. And somebody, I think, and my question is, so you could determine what's suitable from a business standpoint to the number of slips that you needed for this size camp ground. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. I mean, there's, there's a lot that comes into play along with what else is on the lake, what other amenities there are, as I said before.
Drive the beach of those lakes, right?
Right. So there's, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that I don't have control over.
Okay.
And that number is, you know, it's non-existent really.
We're trying to respect, not, not a conversation. We're trying to respect, I mean, and Jellystone, as much as we're trying to respect, um, everyone around. I mean, you, you are, uh, Jeremy is, I'm not talking, it's not a conversation. I, he's our neighbor now. This is, yeah, right? So, uh, yeah, we have to, we have to, I, I personally do not want to be looking back at this decision and saying, oh, you know, we never thought about that.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if you, again, not trying to discourage you from taking more time, I just want to be like, to make sure it's with a purpose.
Yeah.
Because not to have vague questions.
Good guidance.
Um, and the other thing I will say is, so we, there's so lay, lay out our options now. We can, um, vote to approve. We can vote to deny, move, we can, we can move. Um, we can move to counter, delay, we can move to make a counter proposal. So, and the counter proposal and delay could potentially go together. So if we wanted to make a counter proposal and also the way we could, but we also don't have.
I mean, I, I do this all the time, right? That's, that's my job. I'm in contract negotiations, uh, all the time. And, um, I don't counter unless I know I would be comfortable if the other party accepts that counter. And I have nothing to base a counter offer on that I know would be the right counter.
We did have the Lake Association throw out a number of half.
I don't trust the Lake Association. I'm up with the perfect number, I do. They might be happy because it's better than what we, but I don't know if it's the right number.
Okay.
How are you gonna determine the right number?
I think we've gotta figure that out. And that's that, that may require additional uh, public session, but, but I think we've got a little research to do. I know, I don't want to delay this next year.
I think we've already, we've had it, I think.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I don't know if we can have another public.
I'm not inviting them.
Alright, so that's what you're.
That's my motion comfort level.
Did you restate the motion so she can take it down?
Motion, we have four options. My motion is that we, uh, we stay this decision, we, we delay it and, uh, we study the issue and we come back.
Can I, um, reword that? Discussion.
Second.
Okay. Um, does someone want the second motion?
Is there a second yet? Then seek another motion.
Repeat that again, please.
We have four options.
Yeah, no, the one.
The one I choose is the, I believe it was the third one that was stated, which was we are not countering. We are not approving. We are not denying.
Further analysis.
Further analysis and I second further analysis.
Okay. Um, so discussion on the motion.
Before you do that, if you're going to take that route, you have to give specific questions that you want answered in that analysis. So we're not just walking away scratching our heads and coming back scratching our hands. So I would suggest each of you come up with a specific question you need answered in order to be satisfied to make a decision.
Yep.
And my suggestion, I guess, would be that we, my suggestion would be to reschedule the, that we plan to, uh, take this up again at our regularly scheduled meeting in two weeks.
And do that after. Figure out the timing after the motion. So right now, your job is to put together the questions. Make the motion, second it, vote it. Once you voted it, you have to offer up the questions to be answered. So you have a first, I think you have a second.
We didn't have the discussion totally. You guys are making up the questions. I guess I feel that this is a, anytime you delay it, you're not making a decision. It's a denial of sorts anyway. I'd like to ask the question, how long do you have before you have to do anything, Jeremy? Or do you have a timeframe? I can ask that question.
It's very impactful to a business and, you know, the further we push it off, especially as we go through the morrow, you know, they, that's our busy time for camping, so. I, I can't make you guys change your mind on the timeframe, uh, but I will say it's, it's hugely impactful when it comes to busy season and make sure that everybody's being safe on the water.
And will they write in? I have a quick question in, um, does the dock come in sections?
Sure does.
What are the lengths?
Uh, so the, the middle section, I believe, uh, each middle section is sixteen feet.
And are there a number of slips per section?
Uh, so every, every T that comes off would be four slips essentially.
So it's sixteen sections coming sixteen feet and four slips per sixteen feet and four slips per section.
Small section at the beginning here. Uh, so this section here, because the water is shallow, we don't have a T zone. We have to get out. And there's, that's the only place that the dock is actually stationed there.
Okay. And that's a sixteen foot section also, is that?
I believe that's thirty two feet at the beginning of the top.
Okay.
For reaction.
Then you go into sixteen foot sections, is that correct?
Oh, well, that's still sixteen foot sections.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, you go sixteen after the thirty two.
Suggest that we're thinking in six, in multiples of sixteen and four.
Yeah.
Public, you gotta speak up, guys.
Oh, yeah. So just thinking of them in terms of four, it would be thirty two, twenty eight, twenty four, goes in Canada. In terms of slip numbers, those are the increments.
Cause I don't know that we'll ever be able to come up, I guess, this is my, this is part of our discussion on the motion still, I believe. That we're not gonna be able to come up with a number that's relevant. I don't know that we can. We're gonna be shooting blanks anyway. I don't know that we're gonna be able to find a viable answer.
Well, we're not gonna get guidance. It sounds like we're not gonna get a formula that comes up.
Yeah, it says this is the number you put on a lake the size of this with this water quality. I just don't think we're gonna find that answer. So I'm a little opposed to the motion to continue this on. It would be better in my sense right now to just deny it if we're not in agreement that we can approve it, or we go back and we make an offer as to what we can do and feel comfortable with it, that, uh, we don't know if it's right. We just can feel comfortable with it.
Counter with, uh, approving a lower number at a time. There's nothing to stop the captain coming back and asking for.
Yeah, that's right. Come back. Yeah, I presume is it? Do you hear what you said?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You got distracted.
Okay.
We're all right.
If we can do so that, um,
We'll feel comfortable with.
We're helping these guys to, hey, they've got big impact. They're, they're trying to get docks in so they can accommodate holiday traffic. Um, we counter with. A smaller number. And that's it. That's all we'll prove at this point, based upon the information that we've got. Nothing's stopping them from coming back. In the future, right? And saying, okay, so we'd actually like to add more to what we have.
That's perfectly reasonable.
Yes, you're suggesting, hey, this year do X, see how it goes, and then next year they have to come back and reapply.
They can come back in a month, I suppose. We might be in the same situation, we're not quite sure what the, what the permissible amount should be. So that's something we should probably take on a little bit proactively and think about ordinance definition for purposes like this.
So as I'm, I'm sitting here and just between us, I'm just, I'm listening to Ed, his words are resonating, I mean, there's, there's no guidance. There's no guidance that says, hey, X amount of boats are allowed on said lake in, in the state of Maine. So, yeah. By my gentleman? Yeah. The chair's permission?
Yes.
My suggestion would be, come up with a number and ask the applicant if it would work for him. Make it conditional for the first year with the agreement that he'll come back at the end of the year with a report on how it went. How the dock, how the slips were. Occupied and come back at that time with solid proof of where maybe you should go more or less. So what you, what you would be doing is, first of all, asking the applicant if he would accept twenty eight slips or something like that. As a condition, we, you would grant that. One of the conditions would be that he would have to come back at the end of the year with a report. And at that point, you could either expand or contract that. That would be a separate meeting, a separate proposal. That would give you the information you need. That's my suggestion. But make a suggestion to him so he can shake his head yes or no.
That's a, that's a fair suggestion, I think. Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm looking at, you know, I don't know, the state's at eighteen for the public. I don't know why that rings in my head. I mean, we're all pulling this up, a number. And that may not be satisfactory, but the state came up with it and they probably don't know where they got it either. So.
You mean the number of parking spaces?
Yeah, well, the number of parking spaces that they allow there. So this is a parking space too, but it's on the lake, or am I wrong? Or is that not good logic?
I, I mean, it's, it's.
Well, close.
Right, I mean, the question, I guess the question would be to the state. Like I'm thinking of where the public watch is for Anders Goggin off of one thirty two, like there's no room for.
Okay, but he's got room for expanding, so we gotta come up with a number, right?
How do we, if the, I mean, yes, if that's what, if that's what.
Number you like. Wanna gamble?
Well, I'm trying to be smart too and think about his individual sections and at least come up with a multiple of those.
Well, go ahead. How many you got on the section? So how many slips on sixteen foot section?
Four.
On a sixteen foot section.
It's probably easier if you just count by slips. So take down thirty two, it would be thirty two, twenty eight, twenty four, twenty, sixteen.
So we're gonna, what we're really countering is the length of the dock.
I mean, it goes together.
Yeah, I know it goes together, but we're not counting on the slips.
I mean, the slips. The slip, it's a specific number of slips per dock section, is that correct? Yeah, so if he takes off.
Sixteen, I got you.
He takes off sixteen feet. And that for four feels easier to me.
Okay, it is.
And it seems like we're more concerned about the. It seems like the concern is more of the number of boats than the.
That can be docked there.
Physical length. At least that's what I feel like I'm hearing.
Follow Alex's proposal. We can go, yeah, we can, we can, I mean, Alex obviously, you guys talked about it, they thought about it, go with that. It's a compromise.
What's the number?
Alright, let me just.
Excuse me, sir, no talking to the public.
Alright, so that would be taking off four slips, which is then. It's taking sixty four feet. The current dock is two twenty, is that correct?
Correct.
So two twenty minus, two twenty minus sixty four is roughly a hundred and sixty feet. That puts it, it's thirty feet longer than the Anders Goggin yacht dock. It is, it's taken away half their body capacity, or it's half of the proposed boat capacity. And I believe. The existing dock. Questions to whether that even becomes a question of permitting because the existing, there was already an existing dock and I recall it was a hundred and thirty feet.
So we can ask the question from now, but.
Yes, we can, so we, do we, I think we have to.
No.
Motion.
First asked if.
I, I would ask you. I guess I'll ask you. Well, somebody else wants to, would you accept a dock length of what, a hundred and?
Removing four sections.
Removing four sections.
I just wanna be very clear before I answer. So we're talking about four sections, what we're gonna do is eliminate. This, this. So it's gonna leave two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve here. Is that the proposal?
The proposal was that if there's thirty two slips now. You have to reduce it to sixteen.
So the proposal itself isn't for, it's for a total of thirty two, but for this, we're only asking for twenty four. And that's where I want, that's why I wanted to be clear.
Yes, sorry, sorry.
So this is the only thing that's on the permit for now, you know, so whatever we decide here is from twenty four down to zero.
Okay, thank you. And does everyone, you, have, have you seen? So they have an existing, one of the, basically have an existing dock which has eight slips. And that's not part of the proposal because it's already there. So, so. Right, they're applying for twenty four now. So does that change the proposal?
Changes that count.
Okay.
They have eight.
We want half.
We want half, sixteen would be eight more.
That's an interesting question. Do you have a number you'd like to propose? Well, I do math. Alright, so.
So we're, you know, in this section, we're proposing for twenty four. I, I believe that with the number that you guys are proposing, I think that it would be fair to ask for at least twelve slips on, on that one dock.
It stood out. Twenty four, so that would be half. Cutting the dock in half. It would be taking off. So it's taking off three sections. So thirty, thirty plus sixteen, three, it's like forty odd feet, taking it off.
We'll do the calculations, I'll do, we'll get this right.
It would, right, so twenty four, you would have twelve, and instead of. So we'd be removing three slips for forty eight feet. So it would become a. Hundred and thirty two, sorry, no, a hundred and seventy two foot dock.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
We're getting tired, we gotta, we gotta do this math.
We're moving forty eight feet. It's a two hundred and twenty foot dock. So.
Jeremy.
Two hundred and twenty minus forty eight, two hundred and seventy two.
Are we voting?
We're not voting yet.
Or returning the length? That's where we're getting, I think we're getting.
We are getting confused.
So. The length of the dock is gonna be various because of this first stretch anyways. You're counting slips in this area. So that's gonna vary. Really what it comes down to is the amount of slips.
And if you're taking.
I can get you that exact measurement based on, you know, this.
Taking twelve slips off the end.
We're taking twelve slips off.
Off the end, which would mean there's four or sixteen feet, is that correct? So that's three sixteen foot sections, we're taking off the dock length. Is that correct?
So that would be forty eight feet.
Forty eight from two twenty.
Right, which is a hundred and seventy two.
So that's a hundred and seventy two feet length of the dock in that scenario.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, this is not open to the public. That's not in place right now, please.
I, I will check, I will, I will check the math, sorry, alright, sixteen.
He's got one of these old calculators.
Three times, alright, three times sixteen, it's forty eight.
Alright.
Minus. Two twenty minus forty eight, it's a hundred and seventy two. Alright, so. No worries, thank you.
We all have drinks afterwards.
So that. And again, I'm not trying to pressure anybody to visit the question, does reducing the number of slips of the, of this posed dock. By half, twenty four to twelve, which would also reduce the length from two twenty to one seventy two. Does that feel like a counter proposal that we would like to approve?
A motion.
Or to make a motion to approve, or do we?
Make sure we have the number of slips, right?
So it would be, in the existing dock, twelve on the new dock, or a total of twenty. Versus the previous applied total of thirty two.
Twenty instead of thirty two is what we're doing.
Somebody make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion. I think I can get this right. I make a motion that we accept the, or that we counter the proposal. Before us with the length approval of a dock of a hundred and. Seventy two feet. In a total of. Twelve slips. On that dock.
The motion is seconded. Do we have any further? Doug, seconded. Do we have any further discussion on this motion?
I think it's a viable compromise based on the fact that we have so many assumptions to make. I think this is, I think this is, I think this is doable and fair and reasonable. Okay, gentlemen.
There's no further discussion.
Call it by name, please.
And again, it's a vote, you can vote whatever you want. Alright, so I will call the vote and I guess.
Before you call the vote. Just good you have the, what the motion is. Would you read it out loud, please?
Motion to counter the proposal before the board, the dock length is a hundred and seventy two feet and a total of twelve slips on the dock.
I, I'd suggest taking out that counter, just motion to. Accept so many slips.
You've got to do something with the proposal that's been requested. You've got to accept or deny it.
That's, that's right.
So we're denying it and making a counter. We actually.
No, you're allowed to modify, as long as you're going down, you're allowed to modify the proposal. So what I'm saying is.
We're simply saying we would accept this.
Correct, works out that you would vote, you're gonna vote it, period.
The proposal is changed, so we're voting, yeah. I believe there's a particular order, so I'm just gonna. And. Yes.
Yes.
Doug. And I will, I'm gonna vote yes.
Motion passes three to one.
Okay. Alright, that closes this meeting.
Before we close, we had, do we have minutes that have to be? And the next meeting will be held.
Two weeks.
June first, we get a copy of this made here, I'm giving back to Jeremy.
Motion to adjourn? Thank you. I will second it. All in favor?